John, Michael, and Kurt, our illustrious planner, Mr. Rich. And tonight, we're not going to be taking on any actions, but we have several things to discuss. So I'm going to open up to you, Kurt, and give us a little overview on the first one that we've discussed, this village board referral.
Okay. I'm just waiting for this Catherine to open.
And this is the extension of the moratorium that we're talking about.
Yeah. The first item on the agenda is indeed the six-month extension to the initial six-month moratorium that will expire on September 12th of this year. And I've written to the village board, as far as my feelings about it, the village board would like an extension of the moratorium. The county planning board is not looking forward to seeing it, to seeing it again. Of course, the simple fact is that, no, I haven't rewritten the code during this initial six-month period. What we have accomplished, of course, is the North Chestnut Street Gateway District, for which we already had an awful lot of very solid, comprehensive planning done between approximately '05 and '07 that provided the basis for that code change. For the recently annexed property off of H.W. DuBois, there needs to be comprehensive planning in advance of any new zoning district that we assign to that. There needs to be a rationale. Obviously, that's best found in a master plan, a cohesive, unified master plan. I had told the village board both before and after I came to work for the village that, once they expressed their preference for as much recodification as possible, I said I would do as much as possible, even though my first, of course, the first thing I wanted to do was update the village's master plan. And a good municipal planner should be able to do that nearly on his or her own, with the exception of perhaps, of course, the production of the document and perhaps the GIS, the computer mapping that would go along with it, the graphics, perhaps there. So I did suggest, of course, doing that first. That's the normal course of action. In this case, they said there was urgency with regard to what was the B3 district and also the newly annexed property. So in any case, that, as requested, I've provided the board with, the village board, with an extension for another six months to begin at the conclusion of the current moratorium. There's a resolution that was provided to the village board and, of course, provided to you to assist our discussion and any discussion you may, any questions you may have about it.
You know, it's an old boardful joke about the guy who says, "I go to a great doctor. He's such a great doctor. Six months ago, he gave me six months to live. I found I had to go back to him that day, he's a doctor. I ain't got the money to pay you." I said, "I'll give you another six months." When the moratorium was brought up six months ago, I brought up a point, I really don't like moratoriums where there isn't a more specific agenda other than, we've got things to do and we should put a halt to everything else while we're thinking. I'm not a big, I don't see the doors being broken down for development, because I don't exactly understand what's going to hurt by putting the moratorium on again. It's just I have a principle that says extending moratoriums is like going to Doctor Goodwill. "I'll give you another six months to pay me." I can't imagine we can get, it seems like, it seems like a very big task to bring on the Henry DuBois property zoning and get that all done within six months.
Not only that, but also each and every residential district, the existing Gateway District, our first Gateway District, as well as the historic district, for which there is, there needs to be consideration of certain additions and certain restrictions and certain more permissive zoning. So there's a couple of different things. One is, the Huguenot Historical Society has brought to my attention that they would like to rent to professionals and where they might now rent their own buildings to residential tenants. So that's something that would be taken up and analyzed and then decided upon, as well, of course, as the issues surrounding rentals to the extent that they may cease to be, cease to function as a single-family dwelling. So in every district, even beyond the newly annexed property, there's this comprehensive plan that needs to be done. One of the things I've done is provided several updates during the, actually before, during, and during the moratorium, and they conveyed to the mayor and the trustees that, indeed, I'm recommending that we commence the master plan in earnest as soon as possible. And I do have an opportunity next week to provide a timeline and a list of milestones and statutory requirements associated with that process. So that's what I'm, that is, that is my recommendation.
So are you saying that's what you hope to accomplish if the moratorium's extended?
In either case, whether it is or is not, that's my, and it's become, it's built up over the three progress reports that I've provided to the mayor and trustees, to somewhat of a crescendo in the memorandum of July 15th, which goes beyond the recommendation into listing some of the specific reasons, which I think are evident to an awful lot of us, whether you do business with the village, or whether you volunteer for the village, or whether you work for the village, or are elected official.
So what's the village board's reasons for wanting to extend the moratorium?
Well, the mayor had said to me that he would, he wanted, he wanted this for consideration and that he felt the districts that had not yet been analyzed would be, would be vulnerable, and that was his lawyers.
Was there significant progress made during the last six-month moratorium? Or is that just too, there's nothing to measure it against?
Well, I would, this is, I think this is somewhat subjective. If you're asking me, my opinion, yes. The North Chestnut District is significant. It was a large departure from the B3 that preceded it and existed until recently. So that is, now, of course, the comprehensive planning for that was, was done really entirely in '05 and '07. So now, we're looking at, we don't really have the basis to make changes. At the same time, just before I came to work for the, for the village last summer, the village board had enacted two new local laws, which are in effect. One restricts the number of principal buildings on a lot to one, except where it might be a multifamily development of one parcel but several buildings and many units. The other local law was to require, we now require site plan approval by the planning board for the construction of single-family and two-family dwellings. So those two new local laws serve to, serve to provide safeguards in the approval of new residential development, even down to the level of single-family homes. Some of the, some of the problems that were experienced by the village beforehand can now be avoided through that review. And indeed, I've even found places in the code where some of the applications that were approved merely in my office before, before it was consolidated, really probably should have come to the planning board. So there are, things have changed in terms of our level of protection, even without analysis and recodification.
So during this last six months, how many potential applications have come into your office that, where you've said, you know, you can fill this out, but there'll be a delay in processing this until this moratorium is lifted?
Well, actually, my office is not allowed to accept formal applications. So what the, the information I'll give you is that I've had several conversations, but probably not much more than half a dozen, with individuals who were not aware of the moratorium and had plans that they could, plans of one sort or another that they could not execute. It may have been to move from one location to another. Otherwise, of course, there is that, that number of applications that may have been submitted where the folks concerned knew that there was a moratorium and are simply waiting for it officially to be lifted, so I can't.
Okay, I understand that. Okay.
Kurt, what specifically do you plan to have done at the end of that six-month moratorium?
Yes, actually, I, what I would like to do is, is start the master plan in earnest, because we're, no, no court has ever allowed, let's say, more than something in the order of 24 months, and that's the outer limit. It used to be, the rule used to be about 18 months for a period of years up until, while it may be two years, I'm concerned that, you know, the, preparing a master plan with its statutory requirements and the, and the absolute need to be inclusive as far as public comment, I think that's obvious. It goes without saying, if one is lucky, if a municipality is fortunate, they might, from start to finish, that might take a year. And then the recodification that follows, well, as, as we found with the North Chestnut Gateway District, the first draft was submitted to the village board in October of 2012. It was approximately four versions later, it was adopted in June. So in the same way that consultants might, what they do is they usually write a contract for saying, "Well, we will provide the village board with a complete version of that, of that product," but they obviously can't guarantee adoption. So there, once it's before the village board, I must answer to the questions they have and any, any deficiencies that they feel are there and, but still, it's, it's in their hands once it is submitted.
So you're saying that you're going to have the first version of the master plan done in six months?
No. No, it takes, it takes at least a year.
Okay, so what are you going to have done in six months of the moratorium?
Only part of the master plan. This is, the six-month extension on this moratorium is not coordinated with my recommendation. I haven't had a discussion with the village board since providing these three status reports, with the most recent one on July 15th being the most detailed. So I haven't had a discussion with the mayor or the village board about how that recommendation is received and how to proceed. All I know is that, at this point, I view it as, as urgent that we begin the master plan, but it is not coordinated. The reason I chose six months here is because I, I don't think either myself or the village board would like to seek a one-year extension, having already had six months come September 12th.
So within the six months, we're going to begin the master plan?
Yes.
And what will beginning the master plan entail? Are, as you said earlier, talking about having goals and objectives and milestones for measurement, would that be done at the end of the six?
Yes, well, actually, that would just be the, that's the introductory report that I introduced to the village board for, so they can, so everyone can understand the process, the requirements, and the timing of major milestones. Right now, I have not prepared that yet, because it's, it hasn't, I'll have an opportunity next, next Thursday to, to provide that to a joint town-village board for their consideration. And I'm developing that right now. So it's, six months would be presumably approximately halfway through the master planning process if I were given the go-ahead by the mayor and village board to do so.
So there isn't a goal that you need six months for? You just need six months?
No, again, I've, I've.
I'm not saying you.
Right.
So, two items. Okay. The, the property on Henry DuBois that needs to have more permanent sort of zoning established, is that something that should get done under a moratorium and could be done in the next six months?
Absolutely, yes. That, that can.
But is it, is it, given the actual circumstances, is it important to have a moratorium in order to work on that, or is that really?
Yes, actually, that discussion I had with the village board at one of their regular meetings, and what they, the owner of the property did not express an interest in a change from what was assigned as what I'm going to call a placeholder, for lack of a better term. However, the village board made clear that they want new regulations, and in particular regulations that encourage mixed uses on that site, which is, requires comprehensive planning as a basis, because, of course, that is a substantial change from the character of that area, which is nearly exclusively residential.
Yep. So, so if a moratorium was to continue for another, extended for another six months, would that also, would that be something that you would try to accomplish in that period of six months while also working on the comprehensive plan?
Yes, but in a way, that's, that's where I got into a bit of trouble in estimating that within one year of my hiring, that, that I could complete recodification and any necessary basis in planning for that, for that new zoning. There are, of course, many other things intervened.
Yeah, of course. So.
So I am, it is, I mean, I want to be clear, it's a, it's a, it's a change from what I thought under the best of circumstances that I could accomplish in one year.
The second question I had was, you said you'd be making a presentation next Thursday at a joint meeting? So does that mean that the intent of a master plan preparation is going to be include the village and the town, or?
The prospect for that is, is there. However, next Thursday is the first time I'm going to have a chance to discuss that with both village and town officials. So there's nothing, nothing more than, than interest in discussing it between the two.
Yep. Okay.
Liz, did you get a chance to?
Say again?
Did you have anything to say?
No, sir.
So are you, are you looking for a, for us to send on an okey-dokey to the village board, or?
Well, yes. Now, this should be, this is, under our code, of course, it's referred from the village board to the planning board, and it's subject to discussion and a recommendation in either direction by the planning board in response.
My feeling is it's important enough that, one, John can't act tonight. Maurice is not here tonight. I know how I feel about moratoriums, I think I've made it clear how I feel about moratoriums, but I think that this may be an issue better settled out our next meeting when we have four board presidents.
Do we have?
Do we have?
Are we still within the timeframe? Is it a week or two weeks?
I'm going to check that for you right now, as far as the timeline.
What is today as well, the sixth?
It's the sixth, so.
I don't think.
Oh, you know what? So. Wow.
Couple of options.
Could have sworn, but.
It's the 20th, is their next meeting?
It is. The, couple of options.
I will be here.
Oh, okay, all right.
Discounted.
I was going to say that the planning board does.
But you can hold, I would like to vote Dan for me.
Planning board does have a couple of options in either case, and that is that it, it may decide to meet on another night for the second meeting, and especially in the interests of, of being responsive to the village board. I'll give you the, I believe it's 30 days, but I want to, I want to check.
I think it's 35.
It could be 45, yeah.
Pretty sure. It's at the very end of chapter 12.
Right. Forty-five days, as you said, yeah.
And I don't know what the start date was. Is this the start date?
Let's see if, how clear our code is, given our meeting. Planning board advisory report shall be submitted within 45 days of the date of referral or within such longer, okay. So the date of referral, that's, I think that, if it ever came down to it, that could be the subject of, of some disagreement, is exactly what that means.
Well, roughly, when is it?
Well, sure, well, the village board, July 24th, was when they took that action.
Okay, so 45 days, six weeks beyond that is more than the end of August, so that's fine. That's all we need to know. Okay, so you want to table.
I'd like to defer this at least to the, to the 20th meeting.
Okay.
If it goes beyond that, so.
That's fine.
I don't think that takes a vote on our part, does it? No. All right, we're not going to discuss the zoning board of appeals referral of 15 Water Street.
We're not? You don't even want to discuss it? But you won't be here at the next meeting?
Well, John can't act on it, it only gives the two of you.
Right.
So, how much you can do about it?
And you won't be here at the next meeting, you said?
Oh, boy.
So we don't have an applicant to discuss.
No, that's right, we're going to the meeting after that, because the CBA will.
Right. Well, they, right. You're not going to lose any time.
No.
Okay, well, I had a few comments, but I'm happy to save them.
Well, I can answer now, if you'd have.
Okay. Is that all right? Okay. So, well, my first question actually was, is the moratorium that's in place going to impact this? And it seemed at first glance that it might, but then there's a section in there that suggested that if you are not expanding the footprint on the property, that it would be exempt. However, there was a question about whether or not it might be a change of use from a garage to an inhabitable space, and so I wasn't sure if that then would make it eligible to fall under the moratorium. And I didn't want to put you, the applicant, in a position where you went through all of this, only to have the law run foul. However, if the moratorium expires on the 12th of September, then maybe that's a moot point.
There's also somewhat of a question here on that, on that application, as to whether or not this building was grandfathered.
Right. No, I understand the complexity of the issues with the building department and whether or not, as well as the fact that you were operating under good faith for a portion of it, and then things changed. But I didn't, just didn't know from a legal perspective if it was clear whether or not the moratorium was going to be.
It's not, and also, it's not a change of use. The building that was there prior had two stories.
Well, I was only reading from the application. It said it was a garage, and it was going to be converted into the new structure. The old structure was a garage, the new structure would be a garage and, and studio.
Studio above it.
And the bathroom.
So there'd be a bathroom in the studio, yeah?
Right, so I didn't know what that was.
But studio not meaning housing.
No, I understand what it means. Art studio is what you'd said in the narrative. So that's, I, that was, I'm not defining it, I'm just recognizing that the application just makes a distinction between the previous use and the proposed use. I wasn't sure if, there was a question about whether that was considered a change of use.
Lucy.
You don't necessarily have to answer all that, I'm just. So that's really my only question. I actually have, I have a whole nother point related to this because of this, this set of buildings that exist right there, that are the only inhabitable buildings that exist in any of our floodplain districts. And I just think that we ought to deal with that as an issue and not try to sort of, I mean, just make it easier for the building department and people who currently and in the future might own those buildings, without destroying the intent of the floodplain zoning. So I have a few ideas for that, but we can save that.
Well, I think that, that is important. In other words, and even Rich and I talked about the fact that an analysis and review of the F floodplain district might result in different regulations, a, a different name even for the district. In other words, there's some question about whether the berm upon which the railroad tracks have been built actually served as sort of a levy. That's not recognized by the engineering done by FEMA. I'm curious as to if there were to be a specific analysis by a civil engineer, would that engineer come up with a, another, a different result after studying it? In other words, it seems to hold back the water, but that's something where you need to have a civil engineering basis in order to change regulations or?
Well, according to the engineering that my neighbor did, my basement level is two and a half feet above floodplain. The road is in a flood zone, but my basement is two and a half feet above it, and that lake is behind it.
Right.
The problem is labeling that district F. Who would want to develop anything down there?
Well, except, except for.
F never stood for fine in my book.
As a former teacher, I guess that's true. Yeah, well, anyway, I don't want to extend that discussion now, it might be more relevant, but I, but I do think that there's value in having a floodplain district, especially in, in other parts of that zone, as well as in the other zone that's floodplain, that would seriously prohibit potential development, because, at least in the other one around the sewer plant and so forth, we know that it floods.
Yes.
Seriously there.
Very seriously.
But given that these houses are there, it's sort of a question of whether or not there are different options we have, and I think we should recognize that. I mean, just in reading through, the reason it was that, in looking through the area variance requirements, the, what's requested, what's required for the floodplain and what's possible, not just for this current application, but for any of those buildings, is so extreme that it just, we shouldn't ignore it. The lot, you're supposed to have an acre of lot coverage to do anything in the floodplain. And those, those three properties and even the.
Very tiny.
Even the box factory.
Combined aren't.
Yeah, are, yeah, all of them together aren't close to 40,000 square feet. So, you know, and, and they are right on the road, and you're supposed to have a 200-foot setback, which would put you in the river.
Yeah.
So it, it just seems silly to try to apply these to buildings that were there probably before the zoning was in place.
That's true.
And so with that in mind, and I don't see that as a, hopefully not a large conversation or difficult to come to, but anyway, so that's.
Well, I also think there should be an incentive to saving an 1848 building.
Yeah.
And the only incentive I have is to rent it out as a slum. Because there's nothing else I can do with it. There's nothing else I can do.
I don't know how to address that, but I do.
But there's nothing else I can do with it.
Okay, I mean, I don't know how to.
I'm not sure this is the place to do it, since you're.
I know, I, I already said I'm biased.
I understand.
And mad.
Well, what I would say is, in late 2011, when Hurricane Irene hit, I, I wasn't yet here, can, is there a way to go back and, and documents, since it's relatively recent? I know that areas like town and country, in particular the basement level.
Were those houses flooded? And it is possible to find out, yes.
Okay, that's, that's.
It did not breach the Plains Road.
No, they, if they were flooded, they were flooded from the other, from water coming down off the road system.
I think we might be able to look at that event. In other words, of course, of course, I'm concerned about flooding more than ever, and it's only been, again, you know, when you look at human lifetimes, nothing compared to the way that these patterns of, of heating and cooling are supposed to be happening. However, we're seeing it within mere decades, rather than several lifetimes or hundreds of years. So there's, there's good reason to be concerned about how we handle the floodplain. The only thing I gather, I can, I can ascertain from our conversation is, we need to take a serious civil engineering look at what floods and what doesn't, and perhaps redraw the lines of that zoning district. That's the best thought I have at the moment.
Yeah, that's one option. I'm not sure that that's the best thought, but I mean, with all due respect.
Sure.
I think it's one option.
Well, we can change.
Well, there is, there are, there is other stuff.
Because I'm a little concerned about moving some of those houses into the R2, which is what would happen if you redraw the line.
Oh, when I say redraw, when I say redraw the line, but not just the. Oh, when I say redraw, when I say redraw the line, but not just a simple, not just a simple line change to existing districts, but basing our zoning district boundaries on site-specific civil engineering.
Okay.
In other words, this, this portion of the watershed or the sub, sub-basin.
Okay, I see what you mean.
Now, obviously, that's, that doesn't come free, but it is the best approach I could think, after, after working with Rich and understanding what the situation is with these three particular homes. Um, obviously, in other areas, uh, we've seen things like, um, uh, buildings being raised substantially, maybe by eight feet, and that first floor is not for habitation, it is merely cinder blocks with metal doors that open to let the water pass through. And there's no habitation of that, so that's the extreme case that we saw, that I saw along, uh, the Delaware River when I was working in Trenton for the state of New Jersey. That was commonplace, and it was bizarre, to be honest with you, but I, I think it, I think I'd, um, I would never wager that we're not going to see those types of storms again.
We've also got a lot of engineering work down there because of the problems with the sewer, and the storm sewer we had next to Theresa Falls House.
Right.
We got a lot of engineering work down in that area.
Yeah, so we do have some data.
And like I said, Kip has got, had all the elevation shot.
Yeah, that's what I was, would ask about, tells about...
Maybe he has all that.
Okay. Well, thanks for letting me speak over your show.
And I'm not going to turn it into a slum, don't worry. I don't own it. Um, good, suggested topics for discussion. Ready to move on to that?
Sure, I mean, if, if it's okay with the board, I, I can try to quickly run through these, but mo, more importantly, anything that the board has on its mind may, um, uh, might appropriately supersede me just spending even five minutes on each of these. So, um, these are suggested items, but please, at any moment now or during it, uh, please intervene to, um, to change the topic of something that, that might be on your minds.
Well, number one, you and I have discussed in the past, and I really do like the way you put this together.
Thank you.
Um, there's no reason why every applicant has to have an engineered stamp. I mean, you know, we are somewhat of a cracker barrel board here, and I don't mean that to be detrimental or elastic, but there are some little projects, there are some small projects, and really are homeowner projects, very little impact projects, that they have to have somebody go through engineering studies, um, that couldn't sit here with us with sketch plans. We could be much more informal, all right, or, and no reason why we would have to hire expensive consultants to look at these plans. Um, so I think that's what we're, we'd like to have a discussion that says, you know, how do we change that section of the code that we live under that says we have to have a, a magnifying glass in every application?
Well, I agree with you on that, that something, if, if I want to build a deck on the back of my house, I have to have done by an engineer, you know, plans done by an engineer, which I think is kind of overkill.
That's actually a state building code requirement, that's not local.
That particular example.
Yeah, but the state, the state allows you to take their suggested...
Right.
Drawings, they'll give you a prescription.
Yeah.
You can take it yourself and just redraw it, as long as you meet all things, you don't have to have a stamped plan.
No, no, that's, that's...
But you gotta build it with a prescription.
You have to build it now, right, and that, that depends on, on how far into, um, construction like that one is, in addition to, um, whatever else their livelihood might be.
Okay, bad, bad example.
Well, that's a bad example, cool. So let's go to something else.
Okay, but, uh, and I agree that, that there are some things that by the present wording of the code demands that they go through a full-blown site plan and all that, seemingly unnecessarily. Um, if we were to then separate that out, I think we have to just be careful about making sure that we define what needs a full-blown site plan and what does not.
Yes, and I should, by way of introduction, um, by the way, just for the benefit of, um, of, of the, of those watching and observing, I'll, I'll just quickly read this, this item that we're talking about, just so that everyone is, uh, is familiar with the, with what we're, what we're going to talk about. Required plan information for site plan and special permit review. Currently, an application for site plan or special permit must be prepared by a licensed design professional, and contain information listed under a specific section in our zoning code. It's a relatively long list, and it's very typical of what communities require. Uh, that doesn't make it necessarily good or bad, or suitable for us. The planning board may wish to discuss if a provision should be added that allows an applicant to request a waiver from the board for one or more of the site plan data requirements. That's something that I've encountered with other codes I've worked with. There just happens to be a provision that said, upon request, typically in writing with some rationale, planning board will sit and judge.
That sounds like the easiest way to deal with that, is that they then are the ones, that the applicant is the one who says, by the way, this is so, uh, small of a thing that I don't think it, I, I think it should be waived to do this.
Right.
Plus it allows us to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
As opposed to trying to write a descriptive code that covers everything.
And that's, and...
Yeah.
We're covered enough, well done, we're not.
Yeah.
And even though, even though I'm, I'm pleased to be the village's first staff planner, um, by the same token, those judgments, um, should not really be made by an administrative official, they really should be made by, by the planning board. And of course, what that means is, one, a meeting or part of a meeting dedicated, well, we already know that we now have to dedicate and the initial meeting towards a discussion of what consultants might, might we believe are necessary for review, um, via escrow. We could, that would also be combined with an upfront discussion of, um, would an applicant like a waiver of certain things depending on the project? Um, and so that's, even that is, is, um, uh, some applicants are going to be a little bit disturbed, they have to go through those two things first. However, we don't, I don't believe we have a choice anymore. Um, looking at the last year and our experience with relatively modest small business applications, and, um, and there are discrepancies, and sometimes what we, we often might work with what we get in some of the more minor applications, that doesn't mean that an applicant might not take issue with that, that just because that's what that owner had available, that that's, that's fair, that's, um, um, fair, fair play.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Can we ask the, uh, plan to, give us just like two examples of what would be a minor, uh, project that might come before the planning board? Would be less significant than putting a deck on, but would be significant enough, uh, rather than, say, repairing your fence, which you don't need to come to the planning board if you're doing the repair. What, what are, a couple of examples of what might come before the planning?
A shed?
And not?
A small shed, a zable?
Well, actually, I'd, I'd like to suggest, um, while the historic board deals with sheds and accessory structures, um, those, um, the planning board, that does not rise to the level of the planning board. Um, the sheds, uh, now, a commercial property with an accessory building that might be a very large shed could, that could affect, an approved site plan would come before us as an amended site plan. Um, the deck example that Liz brought up, that is a fairly cumbersome requirement, but that stays down in the building department. That actually doesn't rise to the level, again, unless it were to be sort of a, a commercial deck where it's expected to allow patrons to, um, to sit out on a deck or something of that nature, then it, then it rises to another level. But a residential deck, um, should not. So as far as, um, as far as those types of projects, for example, um, well, moving to, and, moving from one place to another, moving a, a business from one place to another, or even establishing a business where there already exists a structure and no new construction or site alterations are proposed in conjunction with it, that's about as specific as I can get, um, where we might be able to even assist applicants by not bringing every waiver request before the planning board. But I do see, when it comes down to things like, how current is the survey? How legible is the, the plan that, that someone might have in their own files? Um, that's, that's where we really, we're going to have to do it on a case-by-case basis, because I'm going to have great difficulty sitting in, in judgment and meets case on that.
Or if somebody's encroaching on the sidelines, that, or rear line setbacks, then a deck could come before us.
That's, that's true.
Or if a deck was encroaching on a sideline, then you'd be coming before somebody to repair it.
Which would come before us for a recommendation.
And encroaching onto someone else's property. We have seen cases occasionally where there are outbuildings and, and other things that encroach. That is something that would be, I, I believe, subject to what village council says, um, a civil matter between two property owners that's needed to be resolved in some cases before the planning board can make a decision. In other words, the planning board doesn't have the authority to, to grant an encroachment or a variance, however, and, and nor does the ZBA have the ability to grant it.
No, I meant going into the setbacks.
Into the setbacks, I'm sorry, then yes, uh, right.
Now, I can't, I can't tell you, but they can cross over your neighbor's lawn.
No, we have, you know, we've, we've seen plans do come in showing that, um, you know, and so that, that's, that's one example where no construction or site alterations are proposed, and it's someone seeking to establish, um, a business, um, in an existing facility.
Well, I think, at least the suggestion, uh, if, if you're going to do a rewrite that permits the discretion of the planning board to be exercised, then I would suggest that you, uh, make clear whether, what is required, but you don't make clear what's not required. You leave all the not required things open for the discretion of the planning.
So some...
Somebody's having to enumerate...
Right, so including...
A definite number of instances, and you don't want to have to do it.
Right, so minimum requirements.
Right, that, that's right, there are ways to narrow this down to keep it manageable, and in part, it's, um, it's rewriting the text in that way, and then there's the administrative part, um, with the planning board.
I'm a big fan of the, uh, sketch plan meeting, to begin with.
Me too.
Yes, and right now...
I think it cures a lot of hills. Gives us a chance to talk about the scope of the project from the start before you...
Similar to the previous one we just had with the last applicant.
Mr. Downs?
Yes, I missed that one, yes. You visited.
Yeah, site visits are great, circumstances like that.
Yeah.
You're making a feel for what the scope of the project's going to be, you know, and the applicant gets an idea that, uh, what he's headed for.
A lot of towns, villages, and cities require, at this point in time, they've come to require a, um, a sketch plan, a sketch plan approval. So that's, again, something that we would likely recommend to the village board, how we feel on that topic, ought it to be required, and then maybe it's best to be required where, again, there's a threshold. Um, if it's so cut and dry that it's an existing space that remains in compliance with the code and is healthy and safe, um, maybe we wouldn't require a sketch plan, because I can see that, obviously, we're trying to balance all of the interests, and a lot of the times what we hear about is our time constraints, and of course, um, and of course monetary constraints, so...
Yeah, but Kirk, we meet twice a month. If somebody comes in on the first Tuesday, get a sketch plan approval, and know that that light at the end of the tunnel is not a train coming at them, um, but a friendly flashlight, they can meet into the next meeting and get approval.
They can, especially if the board simply...
Or they can walk into the first meeting saying, "I don't need to do this," and find out we're overarching questions and in for a long...
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think, you know, we all know the recent application where all of a sudden we had consulting fees that we may not have needed, um, because somebody rushed into an application.
That's right, and just because, just because I may not be successful in persuading prospective applicants of that is, is not a reason to abandon it, you know?
There's one wrinkle, has to do with the fact that we do meet twice a month, and that if somebody comes in, oftentimes that night is the deadline for applications, for materials to be submitted for the next meeting, and that makes it unrealistic. So we have to look at that aspect of our process. And if somebody's got an ongoing application, we shouldn't penalize them because they're coming for a sketch plan, you know, depends on the, the body of stuff that everybody agrees needs to be available for the next meeting, but, um, you know, if it's a set of drawings and it's not complicated, we don't necessarily need two weeks to look at them, as it is where you don't, you know...
And we have accommodated, we have accommodated some, on some occasions. Again, it, it's, the, the balance between, which I think we all know is, is a difficult one, and that is to, um, to make people feel that they're, eat, they're all being treated equally as well.
I was just about to say, I don't mind accommodating, but not at the expense of blatantly disregarding the existing rules.
Right.
So, uh, knowing that we're accommodating someone because the plan is very simple and cut and dry, but yet technically, the rules, it could be viewed by others that the rules were broken or ignored, because it was a simple thing. Whereas if we have that waiver system, then we don't have the onus of, of being accused of breaking our codes.
I like that word.
Yeah, yes, and, um, I think that, that our discussion now covers a lot of the types of things, which firstly, we could amend somewhat in our, in our code, um, that's, that's what we're talking about now, and then provide for discretion as appropriate while still keeping an even playing field.
Yeah.
By the way, I should mention to the planning board, something I, I just thought of, um, at the July twenty-fourth, um, village board meeting, um, the, the, our, our amended off-street parking requirements and, and the notion of, of giving discretion to the planning board, um, that, I was there on that topic. Um, village council had asked, um, for, until the next meeting, to add certain language to it from a legal point of view, so I'm hoping that, um, it's adopted at the next meeting. I look back and I see how much time has passed since we first conceived of it, and since we first passed on the language that we wanted to the village board, and I'm sensitive to how the board feels about that.
Does that mean it could come up next Thursday at the joint meeting?
No, actually, just the, the village board meeting on the, uh, fourth, uh, Wednesday.
Okay, that's...
Kirk, you really got me on number two here when we talked about adding parking places to Main Street.
Sure.
The only thing I could think about would be east of Platic Hill Avenue, but where are we talking about on Main Street where we've got any space?
Well, sure, I, and it went, in midtown, I realized that that's, that's an imprecise term in a, in a small town, but of course, I was seeking to describe, um, east of Platic Hill indeed, and what we see are new businesses, retail, um, businesses, um, starting to, on the increase in, in our, in the area between Platic Hill and, and the town-village line along Main Street. So, um, as, my sentiments, and I've, I've expressed this to the village board before, um, is that, um, people seem to accelerate very quickly as soon as they leave, um, downtown, and it, it, it takes, for somehow the road takes on a different feel. I think we need to make the road feel, um, uh, less comfortable for accelerating up the hill past, um, past Platic Hill Avenue. And also, we do need more parking, I mean, if you look at that, there's, um, what I'm going to again call Midtown Strip Plaza, where there's a deli and a laundromat, um, uh, on the south side of Main Street.
By the bus station.
Yeah, and that there simply are not enough parking spaces for that shop, it's a simple fact.
So basically, you're saying like on the other side of the road from the bus station?
It would be like Prospect to Oakwood.
Okay.
Because beyond Oakwood East, there is parking on both sides.
That's true. And what I'd want to do, of course, is a careful look, because I bet that already you can probably think of places where that's not possible. For example, um, a UCTC bus stop, um, the buses of, the larger regional buses pulling out of, uh, making a left, um, rather than a right out of Prospect. I think there are places where this, this cannot work, however, I'm looking at it almost as a, add where you can, and as you may know, we have lost some spaces on Main Street and elsewhere, but particularly on Main Street where it was untenable trying to make a safe left turn.
Even more aside issue.
Yeah, so of course, I'm not sure that that's self-evident. I know that, um, uh, that Russo's Deli is, is a business only a year old, and of course, it was not, it was not desired to take spaces away from there, but that intersection lost several spaces if you, if you look at all four corners. So I'd like to attempt to replace where we can. It appears that we haven't, now, maybe, if, maybe something was done by our transportation consultants on that in, uh, the area of O, O five to O seven. However, I'd like to... However, I'd like to add spaces where we can and give drivers the sense that this isn't, you're not clear and out of the downtown. This continues to be a business district with pedestrians and cars stopping and cars even parallel parking, just like the urban environment that is our downtown.
Now Kurt, are you looking for free parking spaces or are these intended to be metered?
Well, they'd be metered if necessary. So I guess, what do we have? We have some towards the town-village line where I guess they, there is no metering at some point.
There's no metering north of Denton.
So I'd only recommend metering where necessary to keep cars from being parked perhaps for days on end. And I think that's the way that we came back to metering, if I understand, in the 90s in the village where we were concerned about cars being left for a long time and they were, they might just be sitting there and obviously that meant that business owners could not have their patrons parked there. So I would not recommend metering.
What's the minimum width of the street for parking?
Right, let's see, the 11-foot lanes are what's required and of course we know that it's our main street, but it's also State Route 99, so I'd say Route 299. So we're obviously, we are confined by their regulations. And it's 11 feet per lane, which is also intended to accommodate the largest of standard commercial traffic, not wider loads and special things like that. The other day, there was one accompanied by a large, a lot of escort vehicles to get it through, but that's not what we're trying to accommodate. So 11 feet in each direction and I've measured that in many cases we have 40, a little bit more or a little bit less. And in some places, we might have parking on one side of the street and other places we don't. I think there's the opportunity to optimize the on-street parking we have and I want very badly to, especially now that we've seen in the short time I've been here a couple of new businesses in that part of town and we want to increase foot traffic. But we did have to lose those spaces at Oakwood and Grove. It was really impossible to safely make a left turn or even a right turn in a way. So that was something that we really couldn't afford. So of course, the comment, our conversation now is based on item number two, which talks about additional segments of Main Street wide enough to accommodate on-street parallel parking.
I think that's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think where it can be done, it should be done.
Of course, we do often get correspondence from business owners who are acutely aware of their particular area of the village and they write very coherently to us. There are some questions I have that maybe I could answer myself if I knew a little bit more of the background. Just how we came to lose so many spaces from Front Street. I understand it's the truck route and the buses use it, however, it's already a one-way. That should give us a little more room to maneuver. And I, yesterday, I did go out after work and try to take photos of areas to remind myself where I wanted to write notes to bring to the attention of, for discussion with the village board and in conjunction with the Department of Public Works and Superintendent Blue. Third item is also an opportunity for me to promote this whole concept of wayfinding signage. Wayfinding signage, of course, is a sort of a planning term to help people find their way, in particular when they're driving, but to an extent also for cyclists and pedestrians. What we're looking to do is, for example, I'm hoping to be able to persuade the village to replace the sign here on the property where we are now, Village Hall, where on Platic Hill it says Village Hall Parking. I'd like it to be replaced with a sign that says Municipal Parking and make it as inviting as possible. I think we're losing some people who are regular visitors who might be frustrated driving down Main Street and then having a hard time figuring out how to circle back or where to park at that point. They might be inclined to make the left at Platic Hill if we had a new sign at the corner and also east a couple of hundred feet, just in keeping with standard practices, in order to give them warning that this left is coming up because by the time you approach that intersection, you're really looking for pedestrians in the crosswalk and you're not probably going to see that sign that exists and it does have a fair amount of stickers on it. Some of that might be, some of the problem with stickers could be forwarded by mounting the signs higher. I believe they should be mounted higher anyway per specs for signs because you need to see them above larger vehicles and around larger vehicles that may be in front of you, at least the larger passenger vehicles that are taller, late-passenger SUVs. So there's that and also the sign for the entrance of Platic Hill. It, of course, it goes down a bit into part of what you might call the pit. So therefore, again, I'm looking for a sign that is inviting and clear, not just saying metered parking. There is a sign there and it says metered parking. I'm looking for a sign and then, of course, we might be able to provide for a sign and something surrounding it to keep it intact and aesthetically pleasing and perhaps get folks in the habit of simply parking right there or right here and that short walk down Platic Hill to Main Street.
Michael, wasn't there a study done when you were on the board about signage?
Yep.
Yeah.
There was. The, there was an extensive parking study that was done which included suggestions for wayfinding signs, locations and possibly also designs.
Yes, actually, I found them.
And some of that was certainly, is worth just going back to and having this current village board take a look at. I think the idea, it was partly sort of a compromise in terms of not trying to create sort of a unique set of signs, but I think it's worth revisiting that idea.
You're right, and the work was good. I think it was Resource Systems, I'm sorry, was it?
RSG Resource System Group, yes, out of Vermont.
And they did indeed make specific recommendations and the village should have no need to replicate that work. Indeed, I found it and recognized it immediately as still applicable, especially to those types of things like signage, municipal parking. So there, I really believe that that could make a large difference within a short frame of time without a big budget.
Right, yeah, because this is very underutilized out here.
Yeah.
And there's no reason why it should be.
And then I'll just very quickly just mention item number four before we discuss perhaps anything else. Discussion of Site Plan and Special Use Regulation requiring certified mailings to all property owners within a 200-foot radius of the subject property. This can be exhausted within a community of village-sized parcels, namely, you're encompassing a lot more parcels in a village or a city with a 200-foot radius than you are in the towns that exist in Ozzy River Valley. So I thought that might be an easy one to talk about and again, continue at the next meeting, but make a formal recommendation to the village board. If I understand correctly, it might have been 100 feet until a few years ago.
It used to be contiguous.
It used to be contiguous, yeah.
I do have a comment about that. Some of the lots in older sections of New Paltz can be as now a buildable lot or a lot that has a house on it are as narrow as 50 feet. So if all you have to do is notify your adjoining owners, it could be as little as 50 feet away that you don't have to notify your neighbor. And I think that that's too short.
What if we were to seek to provide tiers based upon some sort of objective threshold for the intensity of the activity proposed? For example, we are at some point going to see site plan applications for single and two-family dwellings. I think things like that and area variances that don't involve, again, assigning a threshold and in some cases, 200 feet may be appropriate. Certainly, especially where something large is proposed to be constructed on a lot that may be redeveloped or have no development on it. So again, I'd like to think the answer might be in different tiers for whether it's merely adjoining variances.
It might be a lot more limited to something that was tiered instead of a cut and dry adjoining owner because adjoining owner, it could be a flag lot or what I know as a pipe stem lot. You know, the great, the pipe stem is only 12 feet wide for a driveway and technically that's the adjoining owner. So the next owner, the next neighbor over is only 12 feet away, yet they don't get notified, you know.
Right, well, that brings us to-
The property also wears the scarlet bulletin.
Well, that's the thing. We also, again, this ties in, we have a sign that's required and at the same time, again, if, when our village official website is more recognized as something that's going to have a lot of information on it, for example, exactly what must be posted in the newspaper or sent out should invariably be on the website. But again, I want to recognize that municipal websites take an awful lot of maintenance. It's not something that I think is just tacked on to existing obligations of any one or more staff members. But that's of course for the village board to consider. But if our website became more and more a frequent reference for residents who wanted to look not only for things like what might be going on nearby then with regard to land use applications, but an awful lot of other things, events and fun things as well. Now, not to say that those things aren't mentioned, but, well, for what it's worth, I think that, I don't think a Facebook site can really, should really take the place of that. So, but what we have is a lot of folks who might have a minor area variance and they find themselves heavily invested in the process such that they're sometimes making a threshold decision based upon whether they want to go to the ZBA based upon the upfront work for what can be a fairly minor area variance.
How many homeowners do you have within 200 feet of your house?
I don't know.
You got to fill those garden condos.
Yes.
So that's a lot.
That's a lot. You know, whereas, you know, the one I just did on Water Street didn't have, they got a river behind it. With a frontais, I didn't even saw it, but you know, wiped out a whole lot of area.
You know-
But, you know, I think, you know, the fact that it has to wear the scarlet letter on the front of the property, which interesting enough, I've got three or four calls this week on people wanting to know how much condemned property on Water Street was because they saw the pink sign and thought it was condemned. But, you know, between the pink sign being up on the property, the fact that this is quite a small village, 200 feet, depending on where you live, can be quite onerous.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'm not disagreeing with that at all. But on the other hand, there are, could be instances, and I can think of several, where you'd only have to notify the one that's 50 feet away. And that, I think, might not be sufficient.
What's interesting is the one I just did on Water Street, only two of the properties were owner-occupied. The rest were all rentals and commercial properties. And one of them's occupied by a oldest trust lease.
See, that raises the ante a little bit too because we know that we have approximately three-quarters rental and one quarter owner occupied in the village. And what that means is that the owner of the property is of course getting the notice and the tenants may have absolute, well, okay, there's a sign on the front lawn, but they certainly will not get the benefit of that notice. They're not going to get that. So that's where more of a, you know, a website that you can go to. And again, at this point, you know, I think every public library, including ours, has access, free access to the internet and therefore to the municipal website. I'm thinking it's more inclusive in some ways, not to replace one with the other entirely and in all circumstances. But, yeah, I am concerned that tenants in homes will have, they will have no idea. Now, they're not the owners of the property, but and they might-
Is the public notice supposed to take care of the ones, the public notice, the newspapers supposed to technically take care of the tenants of?
Yes, and I'm very concerned that at this point in time-
I'm sure that in reality, that doesn't happen.
I'm merely, I'm very, I'm depressed the newspapers aren't going to survive in their physical form, okay? I mean, obviously, the Washington Post and Boston Globe, the Washington Post was sold this morning for an unbelievably paltry sum. It never could have been fathomed, I don't think, as little as 10 or 20 years ago that this was, but here we are and other newspapers are struggling. So I'm afraid that these notices, classifieds, Craigslist has replaced when people might have caught those notices when maybe looking for something else in the classified section. I'm concerned that it's outdated.
It's going to turn into a dinosaur.
Yeah, and I think in New Paltz, I came here to find that the printed word is alive and well here. But again, that's just something nice about our community. In so many places, the newspapers are either merged, folding or bought up and they're not quite the same anymore. So I'm afraid that people aren't coming across those notices anymore. Times are passing by, time is passing by what was an effective method of communicating these types of public notices.
Plus, you know, this might be a little naive, but I also think people are gotten the idea that they're being protected by the planning boards much more than they used to be. That they, at one time, the planning boards fed the good old boy system, but they don't anymore. They really do go after the public interest and I think we do. I think we're very fair in the way we put the law there. And I think that the public has become aware of that. You know, we're much more, we're very conscientious about what we do. You know, look at the vast throngs of people that we have with us. They trust us, I think, or they're not interested.
Well, it depends on what's on their agenda too. But I mean-
More than a neighborhood issue though?
Yeah, no, I see your point. That may play a role and that's fine. I think it's a question of being sort of multi-pronged about this as opposed to relying on legal notices and certified mailings. I understand the rationale for certified mailing. I don't necessarily think it's necessary to do that if you have sufficient ways to inform people about this. I mean, if there was a, you know, because we have a multitude of ways to do this now. We have the website that could have simply a place where people can go for public to hear, to be identified publicly. There's a page for public hearings and it just has to be kept up to date and I realize that somebody has to do it and that's an issue. You could send out a whole lot more notices to neighbors if they weren't required to be certified mailings and you could do it a lot more easily. And if people were willing to, you know, there might be a fairly simple mechanism to collect, if people were willing to provide their email addresses, there might be a fairly simple algorithm that would allow you to identify people within 1,000 feet of a property by their email addresses, I mean, by their addresses and then match it to an email address and just send a mass email.
It would be very expedient to do that and I think, of course, I don't know how to go about the business of asking residents for, I mean, I-
No, you don't, but you don't have to ask them. I mean, you just, if, for instance, and I'm just making this up on the spot, but I can't imagine that that is undoable. You're basically searching a database, comparing information, extracting a piece of information from it and then making that one of a series of addresses that goes on basically a formula where you fill in the address of the property.
We know that's good, but with three-quarters of the population being rentals, people are going to be directly and most affected by it.
I know, right. So that may be, right, so for them, that may not be, right, so that might not be a good idea.
So I think you're right, you have to do multiple things.
Yeah, and, you know, having signs out and, you know, maybe the newspaper would start putting something on page two or three where public notices are not listed in a legal fashion, which have to be in the back by law, but would basically just have a shorthand version of a saying, you know. The village of Newport's planning board, on August the twenty-second is holding a public hearing with such and such property for more information.
I, there are, I mean, as much as I use emails and my computer, there are still people in this world, like my parents or that just ten years ago, we graduated from a rotary dial.
Yeah, no.
And, I mean, without exaggeration, um, and they're not gonna learn the computer.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, and we still need to take that into consideration.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, do multiple ways to accommodate generational differences and logistical differences and.
In fact, uh, state law, to this, to this point in time, and for at least that last half century, the last half century, um, state laws required with regard to use in area variances and special permits and subdivisions, they actually tell municipalities in New York State what they must do. Site plan is different, um, the, uh, localities have more discretion with regard to how they handle site plans. Um, none of them require two-hundred feet or anything, but adjoining, perhaps, notice to adjoining of, of subdivision or, or variances. So we're, I think we're on our way to a pretty healthy discussion of this. I mean, as, as Michael mentioned, in other words, certified mailing, which, um, we know that we're gonna have some folks inform us that they simply state that they didn't, they didn't receive it. Now, even in the case of certified mailing with return receipt, and we know how much that is per article, in other words, it goes from the price of a, a first-class stamp to several dollars a piece? Okay, and of course, um, you're, to my knowledge, there's, to this point in time, you still must fill out by hand each card and each certified mail, okay, and then we know that even if this letter is waiting for you at the post office, um, there's certainly no mandate that you pick it up. You may know what it is, you may or may not wanna pick it up. Um, now, this just happens in a few cases, obviously, but that's enough to make a board worry about the sanctity of the hearing they're about to hold from an Article seventy-eight point of view. So, I mean, it doesn't take too many exceptions to, um, to cause a, a little bit of duress in that.
Do you wanna bring a glass up? Mr. Lezon?
Oh, it's just my pleasure to be here. I feel that I have been allowed.
I thought we still loved your sign. Well, thank you everybody for coming in tonight.
Uh, if there's anything I wish to convey to the, to the village board, I'd be happy to be liaison in both directions.
It would be nice to have snacks during our meeting.
I'll convey it.
And what will be the person that will be during here?
I'm motioning for it.
Second.
Hi.
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 Can I just say one thing? I'm a major, so I'm not forcing.
And we're off here.